I call to order the Board of Trustees' regular meeting for September 20th, 2022, at the time of 6 o'clock. Trustee Johnson, would you like to give the invocation, please?
I'd like to. But, dear Lord, thank you for this day and thank you for this great sunshine that we have out here and citizens that the township, be it those who protect us, who are our first responders, who are men in the service, and they keep us safe, you be with them, and that you stay with their loved ones as they miss them. Amen.
Would you call me with a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Father, on the United States of America, and to your beloved and righteous standards, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Johnson?
Here.
Ms. McKee?
Here.
I move to adopt the agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Yes, I think before I make any motion or anything like that, the JED-Z board appointment coming up, that's October 19th, that should be on there, including with the JED board appointments that have already expired, to open it up to residents that wish to serve. And then, I think that's one of the more important things, but also, we have outstanding items from the resident on Main regarding the noise in the entrance, and we also have a vision on the insurance that's, we have to make the decision by October 1st, and also liquor permit on, I think, October 14th. So, I think there's some other things that the Board should consider.
Kaufman question?
No.
I'm sorry.
There's still discussion. Well, I'll make a motion to add the JED-Z board appointments onto, under the JED-D board appointments, and then also place the vision and liquor permit on the agenda for discussion.
Is there a second? Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
No.
There's been a roll call because you guys from lack of seconds.
Oh, go back to the first one. I move to adopt the agenda.
She had a roll call, the person hit, for the record, is dies from lack of seconds.
Yeah, that's what I thought, it was a roll call.
You had to state it for the record. The person died from lack of seconds.
Okay. Roll call, Ms. Varian, please.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Public comments are limited, three minutes per person. Please come up into the podium and state your name and address as well for the record, and please keep your public comments to three minutes.
Good evening, and tonight I would like to address special meetings. Since the previous two township meetings were designated special, I decided to look up some definitions in the Ohio Sunshine Laws Resource Manual. According to the Ohio Opens Meeting Act, found on page 98 of the 2022 Resource Manual, a meeting is defined as "a pre-arranged gathering of a majority of the members of the public body," that would be you, "who are discussing or delivering public business." For regular meetings, notice must include time and place of the meeting. For all other meetings, special and emergency meetings, notice must include the time, place, and purpose of the meeting. Therefore, a regular meeting such as this meeting has two requisites, whereas a special meeting has three. If I'm to understand this correctly, then the purpose for delaying the August 16th and September 6th meetings was simply because one of the three trustees could not be present, even though a quorum of the public body would have been able to conduct regular business on behalf of Aetna Township and its residents. And noting the contentiousness of some at these meetings, I will pose the obvious question: What if Mr. Evans is unable to attend a meeting? Now, I would like to propose that our trustees schedule an authentic special meeting in October, with the purpose for discussion and deliberation of resolutions initiated by township residents. I submit three purposeful topics for discussion: The establishment of Aetna Township as an exclusionary zone from large wind and solar projects per Senate Bill 52; a noise resolution currently non-existent in the township; and the latest barbarian at the gate: battery energy storage systems. These are timely and time-sensitive topics that require immediate attention because our residents, properties, and quality of life are at risk. I suggest that, save Hartford Township, a group actively questioning and resisting these projects in Hartford Township, be invited to speak at this special meeting to educate our citizens about their experiences with solar companies. We also have citizens that have researched these topics, and that information can be presented to the trustees prior to their discussion. We need you trustees to be forward and collaborative leaders, and the longer these topics are up and others are delayed, going into the agenda black hole, Aetna Township loses.
Thank you.
My name is Shelley Marie E. Pott, and I wanted to take a few minutes, just express my own thinking about refugee road work between Beacon and Parkway. And this is all based on my understanding from the information that was presented and as I understood at two of our past meetings, and I'm just saying what I remember when I have in my notes and how I understood it. I've realized there's probably been a lot of meetings going on about this that I'm not privy to, it's out of my scope, but so just want to make, I'm not an expert, just thank you for your time. As I understand, was discussed that the project was to be totally, total, approximately made $10 million, using money from TID, County Commissioners, of Licking County, we're going to talk about contributing $1 million. And then, as I understand, Aetna Township has a memorandum, had, has a memorandum of understanding with Pataskala to split the remainder cost of the project. That was approximated to be $3.5 million, as I understand. And Aetna could also have two of our existing warehouses under their current agreements in place contribute money as well. I think one warehouse could contribute $1.5 million, if I remember, the other one $1.75 million, but ultimately, reducing what I have in my notes, the cost to Aetna Township at approximately $240,000, which in the grand scope of the project, looks like a really, really good value. I'm trying to put my personal preferences aside, I know nobody wants to spend money we don't have to spend, nobody wants to see more warehouses go up when it appears we have plenty. But it was also discussed that it needs the possibility, if more warehouses did go up, they too would be contributing to the overall cost. It's possible, maybe we could get ours down to zero, but that's, you know, best case scenario. But I get the idea that maybe Aetna Township isn't as confident in pursuing that under the memorandum of understanding as maybe I felt they were, and I feel that economic development is going to happen anyway, and I know that Parkway was constructed to, I don't know, attract, but that would be our industrial Parkway. It looks like Pataskala is trying to develop and make their plans kind of gel cohesively with ours, with the warehouses they put up, and they're willing to go in on the road project. It just, I'm thinking, if we don't pursue this and we don't make that a nice place for people wanting to put warehouses, then they might find other places that appeal to them instead, and I'm afraid that might be next to my house or next to one of your houses. Okay.
Thank you.
Time to refer the record, you need to say your address.
Oh, thank you. Do you want to say it now?
Did you say it?
One more, Royal T Drive, Aetna.
Are there any more public comments? Go.
I'm Doris Casera Schumich, 9136 Mink Street. First, on ABC 6 on your side, on August 16th, Bill Vance made the comment, "Before you buy any residential property or build, it's good to investigate the zoning around you." My husband moved here 24 years ago and our neighbors over 35 years ago. Regardless, Vance's comment is null when the zoning resolutions are ambiguous, routinely ignored, and violated. For example, Core 5, Aetna 9154 Mink Street Development, buffering zoning violations. First, the zoning appeals final order variance dated June 28th and August 5th, 2021, approved increasing the height limit from 35 to 50 feet, with the condition that the buffer zone at the west property line along Mink Street be a minimum of six feet earth mound and contain 25% more evergreen coverage because the standards for practical difficulty have been met. Two, the unbuffered wide entrance directly across the street from my property, concreted this morning, is not in the site plan, the map that I reviewed with Trustee McKee, John Singleton, and Bill Vance on June 24th. And third, violation as a nearby property owner, the zoning board had not notified me of the above-mentioned deviation. There is still time to remedy this. Keep to the variance and recall the township's words to ABC 6 on your side. Township says the buffer will be installed towards the end of the project. Currently, without this buffer, us residents are experiencing light pollution due to workers' vehicles and construction equipment parking in front of our properties and shining their headlights west, noise pollution, constant sounds of trucks pulling in and out of violated Mink Street entrance, especially the three to four dump trucks hauling dirt from there to Mink Street in Pataskala and 9000 Mink Street in Aetna, and air pollution, uncovered dump trucks hauling dirt from the construction site to Pataskala and 9000 Mink Street for eight to 10 hours a day, Monday through Friday, sometimes even on the weekend. In relation to this, as an adjacent resident in 9000 Mink Street, I haven't been notified of the purpose of the 10 days' worth of the hauling of dirt from the Core 5 construction site to 9000 Mink Street. This massive shifting of dirt, earth affects me as an adjacent resident. This is another example of violating zoning resolutions. My second comment, very quickly, is noise resolution section 1015. Again, I'm requesting that the Aetna Township either amend the current language, which is open to more than one interpretation and which cannot be enforced, or implement an effective noise ordinance like Licking County's Harrison Township's noise ordinance, as they are our neighboring township and are unincorporated like the Aetna Township. By doing so, the Aetna Township can improve and truly protect the health, safety morals, and general welfare of the present and future property owners as stated in the Aetna Township's zoning website page. Thank you so much for listening.
Yep.
Thank you, I agree.
Hi, my name is Bill Black. We live in 1398 Palmer Road, Aetna. In regard to your agenda for tonight, on the JED-D board appointments, I assume as a discussion during how you're going to do those appointments, and the request to put JED-Z appointments on the agenda, I had hoped it would be on there. Certainly, I would be interested, and I have a couple other residents that would be interested in applying for those appointments, and we would like to know what your process is for doing so, and having the opportunity to serve the township in that way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I agree.
Judy Newman, 9630 Lins Road. I'm here to talk about Scannell. I'm appalled that this administration is even considering allowing Scannell to start a second building when they have made promises to us that have not been fulfilled. I'm tired of dealing with Scannell. Dan Harrington is nothing but a liar and a thief. He tried bullying the Licking County Commissioners. He hasn't fulfilled any of his promises to us. When this project was approved, there was numerous residents saying, "We didn't want any more semis," and yet, while they do, they put in a major trucking company. Mr. Carlisle was emphatic that they protect the residents. We were supposed to have mounted dirt 20-foot walls. They weren't going to cut our treats. They were supposed to put fingers in our yards for drainage. None of this has been done, and I am appalled that you would even consider talking to them about a second building until this is complete. I'm drafting an email to Doug Snyder, which is the COO of Scannell. I think we should stop working with Dan Harrington. Like I said, he's nothing, he's done nothing but lie to this community. He has stolen our peace and enjoyment of our properties 24/7. This should not be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ryan Davis, 8807 Watkins Road, Southwest. I'm on the Comprehensive Plan Committee, which you attended, Mr. Johnson. We discussed openly a few things. MS Consultants came up about creating an active transportation plan to kind of figure out how we need to put this together as one unit instead of piecemeal or have to go back and later do something. I kind of wish this was on the agenda, but one thing I definitely think should have been on the agenda, we asked you, Mr. Johnson. Did you ask to have Refugee Road put on the agenda?
No, I didn't.
Can I ask why?
I don't know.
Could I get your commitment that it'll be on the agenda next time? Because Mr. Loger said this is a timely matter that needs to be handled. Is that a yes?
Guess I'll ask for it to be all right.
Thank you. It's important that we work together and try to put everything together for the Comprehensive Plan. We're having a lot of discussions, which actually is making this last a lot longer and for one meeting a month. Maybe we could ask our consultant, maybe pick it up and do maybe two meetings a month until we get caught up, because I know our last meeting went two hours on the conversation. He was not expecting to go two hours on. So, there's a lot to discuss, there's a lot for the township trustees to discuss. It's a pretty light agenda. I'm not going to be picky on what should have been added, but my thoughts are, with all the things going on, there could have been something red to the size agenda. Thank you.
I would hope that you guys would not pass the road maintenance request that's been submitted. If we're going to do a Pike Street renovation, I don't see why you would throw $100 and some thousand dollars in a dead hole. If you guys were around here one day, was building Nicole's warehouse, the 310 reworking, the overpass and all that, they did that work in front of Coles about three times. Tore it up, they put it down, they tore it up, they put it down. So, it looks like $168,000 is going to be put down and then tore up if you do the other work. Of course, that's a big if. People talk about Aetna Township changing. It used to be a rural community. We want to keep it a rural community. It used to be farmers, it used to be families helping each other, support. Since this change in trustees has happened, there's one apple in the bunch that constantly gets on the Aetna community and bashes the other two because they don't do their job or they don't approve what he says. You know, I don't quite get why people, you know, what's the point in it? If you don't want to work together, quit. But now, since, you know, they talk about housing, they talk about warehouses, they talk about development here, I don't think the warehouses have hurt Aetna Township that bad. I got one right next to my property. I have enough property, I can't even see it in the summertime. I would lots rather live next to a warehouse, a Lowe's truck stop, or a shopping center, because the traffic at those places, it's unbelievable. The people that come in now, those are different warehouses. Warehouses are fenced off, they're controlled environment inside them. I feel sorry for the folks that, you know, live next to ones that's got the banging trucks and the loud noise, but if they didn't do what they were supposed to do, then we need to hold their feet to the fire and make them, you know, fix that. But I think all the folks that's come out here from town and lived in the houses have kind of corrupted the community, and I got to give Mark a credit for that because there is so much hate in this community right now. Never did anybody ever wish you would die, or compare your, I want to compare your IQ, or, you know, want to meet with you. I mean, that's ludicrous. Why do we have to live in a community that's not that kind of an attitude? We're a farm community, we help our neighbors, and that's my story. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Fiscal Officer, Ms. Varian, do you have a fiscal report for us tonight?
Yeah, I do. I provide you with the financials through August. I continue to work with the CPA and the state auditor on the West Licking Development Group, Community Improvement. I was reminded that they were essentially operating illegally since 2017, and that they will receive a fine this year for not complying the last few years. As for Aetna Township, as of...
Could you use the microphone a little bit?
Oh, I'm sorry. Usually it back.
Go back to 2017. Can you read that lower?
I was told by the state auditor that they were operating illegally from 2017 on, and that they would be fined this year. As for Aetna Township, as of 8/31, we've had revenue of $4.1 million and expenditures of $1.7 million. At the end of August, I have only $776,000 reserved for encumbrance, therefore creating a potential carryover into 2023 of over $4 million. This leads me to the topic of Refugee Road. I'm apologizing for my delay and addressing that, it seems to be a hot topic. We can consider the Refugee Road paving in several ways, and I have a couple very basic comments to that. One, the elimination of paying for the residents' trash bills, and one that covers a loan payment. Those were $370,000 for the trash, the loan payment would be $260,000. With the receipt of the ARPA funds that we received, that is going to go to cover the sheriff's contract, which will free up $467,000 in a general fund for loan payments. Based on our existing budget, I have already $1.5 million appropriated for capital outlay projects for the year and zero expenses to go with that. That's $1.5 million would cover five and a half years of payments for the Refugee Road loan. Our carryover, the $4 million I've just mentioned, is also there and available for payments. Our total debt obligations at the moment are $80,000 per year, and for the 310 loan, it's less than 1% of our total budget. And adding in Refugee debt obligations, it would be maybe 3%. I'd also like to add that the JED and JED-Z income to date has brought in $1.079,000 million, and with all the incoming TIPS and JEDs, there will only be an increase in those JED revenues. With Ashley 2, or Amazon 2 and Ashley, the projections that have been given, they're going to more than cover the cost of paving and those loan payments each year. I see no adverse effects on the township financials that contributed to the Refugee project. We have sound budgets, no cash flow issues, and are adequately planning for the projects. That's it.
Thank you. You mentioned it was some kind of, on some of the report for the Refugee, as far as the budget, is there a problem you're seeing?
Could you use your microphone?
Sorry. Did you mention there was possibly a problem with getting this report to us because?
No.
Okay, just wanted to make clear that.
Did you want to report?
No, no, we're good. We're good. Just wanted to make sure.
And I believe we discussed the ability to afford this at a previous meeting.
Yes, we did.
But I've seen personally several letters to Pataskala representatives stating that that was needed. So, I hope this answers all the questions, so we can move forward on the Refugee project, because I do support that we need to put in the infrastructure in place that's needed on there. And then, I did have a question, since Julie brought up the West Licking Development Group that I see that was basically defunct because they let the registration go and also the filings. I believe we need to ensure that we handle that properly. I think there's $123,000 just sitting there, and if we let these continued fines eat that away, and also audit costs, each year there's audit costs on there, it'll go down to nothing. So, that's something that should be addressed. I don't know if it is. It's got to be addressed by the board to maybe reappoint or through the courts, because it is not defunct, that the last board allowed that to happen, John Carlisle and them. So, it's something that's serious, and if we need to give Julie the authority to handle this, because Walter Rogers was the one handling the books, but didn't do it. So, I think either we need more appointments or just dissolve it through the courts. How's the board going to deal with the West Licking Development Group? Because I don't think we could legally expend any funds, because we're not in that group, but we appointed them to. Jeff, you were here.
Nobody can use the law.
Nobody, because it's expired terms.
So, they can't just vote it themselves back?
Nope.
The disbursement says in the minutes that it has to go through the court, please.
Or ask it through court, which is optional, really, definitely, right?
But I think it would take board action to initiate that, so if we want to initiate the action to properly close the West Licking Development Group and see if we can recruit that money, because some of the donations there, I don't know if it's, I think, believe it's pro-Logis on behalf of the Amazon, that would be used for 310 project, I don't know.
President McKee, whenever appropriate. That was one of the items that our development attorneys coming up with a game plan, one of the items we talked about, and we asked, you know, is the money in jeopardy? And they said, "Is it in the bank?" And we said, "Yeah, it's in the bank." They said, "It should be good, then, if you figure this out and approach the county and get it out."
Well, it's a jeopardy from audit fees and fines now.
It needs to be dealt with. Nobody's indicating it doesn't.
I was given an estimate from a lawyer of $10,000 to get it lost. Which war?
Where would most of that money go?
It would eventually have to go out of, I think it's $103,000 that's in that account. So, hopefully, we would get some sort of authority to use $100,000 that's been sitting there for years to pay for the CPA and the legal bills. But the state auditor has appointed me fiscal officer.
And just another reason to reappoint those members on our other boards, because they let us head to this board.
President McKee, are we on A or B or C? I lost track. Come on. Fiscal Officer report.
She just did a report, resolution to approve the purchase for her, this will be right now. I move to approve the check registry agreement as submitted by Fiscal Officer Varian. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Ms. McKee, firstly, I don't think people can hear you. You're not speaking with the microphone.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. Discussion?
Second, did you not, or you're talking about her?
No, I, she said, I couldn't hear her, you know, just speaking to the mic. I don't know if there's anybody else that might be hearing impaired.
Roll call, you have the vote. If I can hear you.
Well, discussion, it did. Well, discussion, I did.
Roll call. Oh, discussion?
Yeah, I did have a question. I did see the mosquito spraying invoice, and it seemed really low. I know Julie mentioned something about they might have been lacking a few employees. I know there were several complaints throughout the year, and those, those communities weren't addressed. Do you know, Ms. McKee, why they weren't specifically?
Sorry, I'm sorry.
So your terms of mosquito spraying, there were only three neighborhoods that were ever addressed. I know there were multiple other ones-
Those are the three we asked email for, and then we're having the issues in the calls for us again.
Well, I saw an email for Orchard Glen. Orchard Glen was not one of those. And I know there were several others. So do you know why that they, those weren't addressed, or?
Mr. Evans, there was a report done. They went out and they did do an assessment out of Orchard Glen. Mrs. Brown, I bet you the governor's making that call and did the assessment.
Sometimes they'll just go out and depend on what's going on outside or other things, and that's where you're at.
I just want to make sure it's taken care of.
Of course. Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move for resolution 2209 to 001 to approve the purchase order as presented. Is there a second?
Do we just approve the purchase?
Yes. Check registry.
I'll second it.
I have all first stuff put together. Do you second?
Yeah, I didn't see.
Discussion?
Was that second my mark?
Yes.
Yes.
I have all first stuff.
Okay. The check was behind first order, did that first up. Do we all?
Because I believe Rosalyn read off the purchase orders, that's why I was on the-
No, I gave the check registry and then we went to resolution, which is 2209.
Well, there's one.
Yeah. It's all right. All right. Do you second the work?
Yes, I second it.
Okay. Discussion?
Call a question?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee? Yes. Make a motion to pay the bills as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I did have a question on the T-Mobile bill. It was $68 previously. It's gone up to $78. Typically, cell phone bills are consistent. Looking at it, it looks like we're being charged for a phone. I believe you indicated that it was three phones with that plan. Did that change, or?
No. It's insurance.
It states that there's 24 payments with so many left, and it's $239. That's not insurance.
Yeah, they contain the pay. The insurance is included in the bill. Call for the question.
Mr. Johnson? I'm sorry. Just go ahead. Mr. Evans?
You don't have? Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Under new business, I move to set a trick or treat for October 31st, 2022, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Does this align with the Morpsy dates for the region?
Do the lines in the city of the task?
Yeah, we can go to task. So I can line that back.
Yeah.
And then I'd just like to mention to the New England Acres residents, we're actually holding a Saturday, September 29th from 5:30 to 7:30. So we'll be different.
Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I move for resolution 2209, 1902. Resolution accepting the amount and the rates as determined by the budget commission in authorizing the necessary tax levies and clarifying them to the county auditors as presented. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
I'm just glad to see that the road and bridge levies back on here for roadway repairs needed.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Move on to old business. I move to-
The JED board appointments, did you notice?
See.
Sorry about that. JED board, okay. I want to make the discussion about the JED boards, because I understand there was a misunderstanding. The JED-Zs out of Newark, those appointments are up in October. The JEDs 1, 2, I think 3 and 4 out of Reynoldsburg, that appointment was up August 19th. There was, that we were aware of. After looking at the documentations from our, that we got presented from Reynoldsburg as well as from the board, there was some discrepancies in the time. So I reached out to the attorney, Albertson Albertson. They sent out some information this late evening. I have not had time to review it, so I'm going to ask that the board review the email that they sent us so we can discuss those dates and who needs to be appointed in the future. So I am going to ask that we table it towards the next meeting.
I would like to discuss.
We can go to discussion. Sorry.
With that, and would it be most appropriate township secretary for a motion to table the item, and then a second, and then discussion?
Well, I'd like to discuss a little bit first, and then we can move out if the board pleases.
Like to table it. Like I said, that's my goal is to table that until we are can review the email and make sure we have the right dates in place, because there was a discrepancy on dates.
Correct. I agree with that. I'm just saying, did the appropriate thing. Make a motion, get a second.
Well, I think we could advertise.
Yeah. We make a motion to table it.
Okay.
Yeah, we make a motion to table it.
Who's the resident, or are you saying I move to table JED board appointment?
I will do.
They need a second.
Yes. Is there a second?
Second. All right, discussion. I think this is wholly inappropriate. These board appointments have expired. There's nothing complicated about the email that was sent from the attorney. It's very simplistic. We should at minimum be advertising this to the residents to see who would wish to serve on here. Please let me finish. So I don't understand why this board won't at minimum do that, because we're just delaying it even further. And again, there's nothing new from what Albertson Albertson presented, because this is the standard, who gets appointed, and it's only one person, it's JED 1, 2, 4 and 7, actually. Now, the JED-Z appointment is to expire October 19th. And that's for JED Z2, which is Amazon. And again, that should be advertised, but we shouldn't wait till it expires. I just don't understand how this board's operating with this. So I would be against table.
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes.
And President McKee, President McKee, we will continue to put together the information and work with the JED board attorneys to have an item for October 4th.
Now, I would encourage people to send in their interest and applications and resumes for the JED and JED-Z boards at the time.
Could you move on to old business? I move to award the 2022 Edna Township Road Maintenance Project improvements to the lowest responsible bidder, the Shelley Company, in the total amount of 1,068, I'm sorry, 168,907.60. Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Discussion?
Well, do you want a little information on this, since this is what I was putting together?
Discussion?
Dealing with? The bids were opened at noon on September 13th. The original motion failed on the 13th at our special meeting, so we're here today. We did receive one bid from the Shelley Company and one from Coco Singh. Shelley Companies was under the engineer's estimate, which totaled $199,319.42, making them, as Ms. McKee mentioned, the lower bidder and was under the 110% requirement of the engineer's estimate. This is something that if we're going to do, we need to do now because this is the end of the season, and they need to know that they're being awarded this so they can get it on their schedule. We're losing good weather for this, so hopefully the board approves this. Both the Pike Street and Edna Crest are in need. One of the residents did indicate that he was against it, but there's no certainty when the Pike Street will be approved. Bill Loser from TID indicated 2028. We cannot let our roads crumble. We have to maintain a certain level of service to our residents, and that's actually an Ohio revised code requirement. So I would encourage passage of this.
Roll call?
And one?
Roll call.
One addition, because we needed author-
Call for the question. Roll call?
We need to know who's authorized to sign the contract.
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Jeff Johnson?
Yes.
Rosalyn?
Yes.
All right, I make a motion.
Are there party announcements?
So no one's authorized to sign this contract?
We were working with it, Mr. Evans, so I think he will probably be the proper person signing.
The board has to vote for that. That's why I was going to make the motion that I can sign this outside the meeting with Shelley Company. We have to do things proper, Ms. McKee.
Whenever appropriate.
Yes, sir.
So I'll make a motion to allow Mark Evans as the signatory for the township to sign the contract with the Shelley Company for the 2022 paving for a total of $168,970.60. And I believe that's necessary to move this along.
Correct. And/or the president could make a motion to sign those papers if she wanted to. I mean, there was other options.
Well, I've got a motion.
But I agree, somebody that is a good-
That's fine. We're fine with that, Mr. Evans.
I'll second it.
Yep. Roll call? Discussion?
Mr. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. Announcement and trustee comments, please limit it to three minutes.
How is it being limited to three minutes? I don't get this. But I do have a question. You met with Trent Step, our advisor or appointee on the water board, and he said, at our joint meeting in January, we agreed to move forward and working together. From that meeting, each of our boards took formal action to appoint individuals to work together in collaborative partnership with Southwest Lincoln School District regarding financial tools to ensure that public infrastructure in the area is properly funded. Mr. Platt was and still is representative of our board. You informed me, this Trent, that Mr. Evans is no longer that representative for Edna Township Board. I could not find where formal action had been taken by your board to make this change, but wanting to memorialize it here in case there were questions in regards to this communication in the future. Ms. McKee, why are you making sole decisions outside board meetings regarding duly authorized representatives for these matters? Is my question. That is wholly inappropriate. Not going to address that? We need to follow the law and do things properly.
Wait for Trent Step, I guess, that why would we appoint a trustee?
In January, I was, I was the point person in discussing that Ms. McKee informed Mr. Step that I was no longer that representative, that she, he would deal with her. And this is going around to a lot of other organizations, that, that everything runs through Ms. McKee. We had an individual last time that did that. We can't do that again. So if the board wants to remove me as the representative to negotiate, it should be a formal action. It shouldn't be one trustee dictating that outside of a meeting. And then regarding the special meeting availability, I am not advised or asked if I can make special meetings. So no, if I wasn't here, they would, I believe would go on, and that's inappropriate. We should work collaboratively together. And Shelley, I agree, refugee does need to go forward. I support that. I was expecting Bill Loser to be here to try to add it to the agenda. I don't know why it's not. We signed an intergovernmental agreement and an MOU, and now there's roadblocks being thrown up. We're supposed to have, they're supposed to be purchasing Rightaway, the Rightaway acquisition, end of this month. It's not happening. We're delayed on the NCA. That was supposed to be August 1st. That scannell is hampering that also there. So there's a lot going on that we need to move forward for the best interests of the township and the residents. So I'm glad we got the paving approved tonight, but there's so much more on this agenda. And I really hope that this board moves away from past practice of just appointing people instead of seeking out people that wish to serve.
Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second? I'm making a motion to adjourn.
I second.
Is there a second? Roll call?
Mr. Evans?
No.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. McKee?
Yes. I'm supporting the second.